Well, thank you. We're happy to be closer to the audience. So I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:01 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to thank Rod for being here again and taking care of our audiovisual needs for Channel 20 and hopefully all the technology issues that we've had have been resolved over the break here. So, thank you Rod for being here. We're now at the point where the agenda where we'll recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our -- we should do that first. You know, you miss -- you take a break from one meeting and you forget how to do this. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scirrano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Now we'll recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. will make that presentation. You have to turn that. There you go. Alright.
Good evening.
Hi. It's working.
Mic check, mic check.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Board members. The Rockford Chamber of Commerce recognized Rockford Public Schools at its Confluence Honors last month. The event celebrated the partnerships in the business community that continue to grow and find success in the area and the people and organizations that come together for greater impact. RPS 205 is involved in three of the 21 successful community collaborations recognized at the special ceremony. The honorees included Building Hope, Habitat for Humanity Partnership, which was with our Guilford High School students through the Emmett Academy who built a two-story, four-bedroom Habitat home. Our partners are Alignment Rockford and the Rockford Area Habitat for Humanity. Those folks are here this evening. Please give me -- join me in giving them a round of applause for this partnership, Habitat for Humanity.
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Appreciate it all.
Thank you.
Ayesha, how you doing?
Happy New Year.
Okay.
So Earl, can we also talk about the other award that they won?
Go ahead, please, Chris, please.
So I'm just gonna take over.
Okay.
So our Habitat group also won in November, the Presidential Youth Service Award.
Gracias.
Oh, sorry. My swim coach voice must not have been loud enough. So our students, our Habitat for Humanity housebuilding students in the Emmett Academy also won the Presidential Youth Service Award through the Association of Fundraising Professionals National Philanthropy Day in November.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, so there is, we're really proud of that program. And we want to thank you guys for supporting that program because it really wouldn't have happened without some decisions at this table. So, thank you very much.
Great job.
Next up, the Confluence honorees, the UTC Aerospace Engineering Program. Chris Underwood of Utah connects engineers to Lincoln Middle School students for match tutoring. The partners are UTC Aerospace Systems, Rockford Public Schools, specifically at Lincoln Middle School. They are here tonight. Please join me in thanking them for their wonderful partnership with Rockford Public Schools.
Alright. Great work. It means a lot. Great job.
For those of you who don't, that's Jim Parker, Lincoln Middle School principal, the man. Congratulations, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The After-School Alliance, 13 schools partnering with the YMCA for drop-off and after-school care, having an impact on 600 enrolled students. The partners for the After-School Alliance are the Northern Illinois Food Bank, Rockford Public Schools, and the YMCA of the Rock River Valley. And we have the CEO of the YMCA, Brent is here, and I believe we have some other partners from the Northern Illinois Food Bank, they are also here. Please thank, join me in thanking them for this partnership. Thank you. Can't bring you anywhere, huh?
Thank you, sir.
Good job, congratulations. Next up, as you all are familiar with, our Rockford University Master's Cohort Program. And we have a wonderful group of teachers who are here with us this evening, and we want to certainly recognize them. Twenty teachers in the Rockford Public Schools make up the district's second master's cohort of the RPS 205 Rockford University Education Pathway. In addition to providing our students with a pathway into the teaching profession, the program supports our existing teachers by allowing them to get a master's degree in urban education with minimal out-of-pocket expense. The RPS 205 teachers were selected from a strong pool of applicants, and they start their classes this month. This is only one part of a strong effort to attract and retain our talent, and we are committed to this partnership with Rockford University. We also know this group of teachers will serve as role models and mentors to support our students who enroll in the pathway to a teaching profession. Congratulations to the members of this year's cohort. And I will just read them all off and what school they're from, and we'll recognize them after that. First, we have Jason Andrews from Auburn, Joe Avery from East, Lotzmi Boonlati from Ellis.
Can they stand as you name them? Can they at least, can they stand as you name them, please?
Sure. If you, okay.
Thank you.
Alright. Sarah Craig from Kennedy, Brent Fritz from Auburn, couldn't be here, okay, couldn't be here this evening, Jennifer Grabowski from Auburn, Olivia Guido from Guilford, Richard Hacker from East, Brian Hirstein from Roosevelt, Natalie Hens from Lincoln, Braxton O'Hern from Jefferson, Sarah Patch from Somerdale, Nicole Ronan from Kennedy, Justin Seychek from West, Justin, that's my man right there, that's my man right there, Sarah Skuro from West, Britten Solverson from Kennedy, Billy Sparachino from Kennedy, Robert Walton from Jefferson, and Jennifer Wood from Lathrop. There she is. There's her. And Christopher Coulter from Guilford. Please join me in congratulating this cohort of teachers.
Thank you.
Good luck. Congratulations. Good luck to you. Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
One last mention here. I'd just like to, just a special recognition, she couldn't be here this evening, but Dr. Swindle from Rockford University manages this program and the undergrad partnership. So just wanted to give her an additional shout-out. Alright. Thank you, sir. That is all.
Thank you. Our favorite part of this school board meeting is doing this stuff. So, thank you for being here. Alright, there are no public speakers tonight, so I don't have to read that long paragraph. But I will ask if there are any board member comments at this time. Mr. Siegel?
Welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year.
Okay. Anything else? That was it, huh? Okay. Mr. Dixon, did you have anything? You want the same thing? Anybody else? Alright, great. Thank you. So we will now move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items. The meeting minutes of our December 12th, 2017 meeting, the payroll accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, construction bid request log, and travel. The recurring contract, which is the second addendum to the consulting agreement for accounting budget development assistance. The other consent items, including the monthly investment report for November 2017, the financial results for November 2017, and the Freedom of Information log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the consent agenda items.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our closed session consent agenda items, including these items. The appointment of Danielle Alvera as the 12-month Director of Payroll, the appointment of Michelle Sather as a 12-month Executive Director of Budgeting, the HR organizational report and addendum, and then the closed session consent items for student discipline. Unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4135 is expelled for the remainder of this school year. Students 4136 and 4137 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and through the first semester of the 2018-19 school year. The expulsion for student 4134 is held in abeyance contingent upon an expulsion and abeyance agreement for the remainder of this school year. The expulsion for student 4133 is held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement for the remainder of the 17-18 school year and through the first semester of the 18-19 school year. And the following students have been granted EIA's, and there's a bunch, so give me a second here. 3387, 3398, 3399, 3400, 3401, student 3402, 3403, 3404, 3405, 3406, 3407, 3408, 3409, 3410, 3411, 3413, student 3415, 3416, 3417, 3418, 3419, and student 3420. Is there a motion and a second to approve these closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, then I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of these closed session consent items.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on our agenda. Next item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Scirrano. It was particularly gratifying to see our second cohort of teachers and different certified staff taking on the challenge of being part of this Rockford University partnership and being part of our urban education master's degree. And just to reiterate, this is part of our longer-term strategy to make sure we have attraction and retention of really, really high-quality teachers because that is essential to our success as a district. We're proud of the fact that 20 teachers are getting a master's degree as part of their development who are already with us. We're also proud that we have almost just under 100 students that are a very strong reflection of both the gender and racial diversity of our community that are in our senior-level education pathway with current high school students who will make up our future teachers. And we're also proud, Mr. Zetiker has recently reported, that this semester alone, we have 36 student teachers in the district. So we are really trying to be as proactive as possible to ensure that we are developing our current teachers as well as planning for the future. And there's more to come. I think we have even bigger aspirations for what we'll do on the teacher development front, but it's been wonderful to see some of these long-term plans starting to bear fruit for our current and future teachers.
Thank you. We'll move on now to committee reports. Mrs. McCulloch, the education committee report.
Education committee did not, has not met since our previous board meeting, so I have no report other than to say we will have a meeting here in this room next Tuesday, January 16th, at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Mr. Rollins, finance committee report.
Finance committee also has not met since the last board meeting, and we will be meeting in this room on Monday, February 5th, at 5:30.
Mr. Connor, the operations committee report.
Likewise, operations has not met. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, February 6th, at 6:30 in this room.
Okay. We'll move on then to action items, and the first action item is a resolution authorizing executive, our Executive Director of Special Education to resolve special education complaints at resolution or mediation sessions. Is there a motion and a second to approve this action item?
So moved.
By Mr. Rollins?
Second.
Second by Mr. Siegel. Any discussion or questions?
Just one quick question. Do I understand this appointment is simply to expedite the mediation process in that the Executive Director of Special Education will not be coming in and just making the decision based on her own, her own position? She's just there for an expediting process, correct?
Well, she would be representing the district's interests in, as required. But also, this is also required by statute because we have to participate in the mediation sessions, and we have a very short timeframe in which to do that. So it wouldn't have time to go through the whole board process.
Would the district not have had internal representation at these mediations before?
Yes, and we do have an existing resolution. I just thought I should bring it forward again, since it's been a while since it's been before the board.
Fair enough. Okay, thanks.
And from my understanding, it's only up to $10,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions? No, then I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of this action item for naming our special ed director to resolve special ed complaints.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I almost feel like I should slow down here. We're going so fast. Okay. Okay.
He just changed it.
Oh, no. Okay. There you go. Our next item is the naming and renaming of facilities. Is there a motion on the floor for that? Mr. Rollins, you have...
I'd like to move that we name the new elementary school, new school number one, name it Constance Lane School in Cherry Valley, with the stipulation that full name be on any signage for the schools.
You want to repeat that for me one time?
Constance Lane School in Cherry Valley.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Siegel seconds. Is there questions and discussion? Mr. Dixon, or Mr. Rollins? You would...
Yeah.
You want to go first?
Sure. You know, I'll just share my thoughts on this. I've, you know, one of the things I've been thinking about in connection with this process, something that happened when I was first running for the school board, I was, we had a lot of candidate forums that time, and one of them was in the Signal Hill neighborhood, and it was moderated by John McNamara, the former mayor of Rockford. And some of the people in the audience who were asking questions were taking the position that anytime something important came before the school board, I should be going out and holding coffees with all of my constituents to find out exactly what they thought, and find, and basically polling them on every important decision. And I was, you know, I was kind of new to being a candidate for office, and I didn't really know how to respond to that. And John saved me by stepping in and saying, he wanted to remind people that we live in a representative democracy where we elect people to represent us, and we elect those people, we elect the best people we think we can, and we ask them to make the best decision, decisions that they can. And I've always remembered that. I mean, it's not that we shouldn't listen to people, and it's not that it's not important to listen to people, but ultimately, decisions like these are our decisions, and we're elected to make those decisions, and we're elected to make the best decisions that we can. I don't know whether this will fly or not. I'm, it's a mouthful. I understand it's a mouthful. I'm trying to thread a needle here, or, you know, do some compromising here. The people in Cherry Valley, there are people in Cherry Valley who feel very strongly that they want their name on a school. I understand that. But it's the Rockford School District, and we need to make a decision that we all think is in the best interest of the entire Rockford School District. And there have been, you know, very compelling reasons brought forward to name a school after Constance Lane, who was the first African-American teacher in the school district and the first African-American administrator in the school district. And so I would like to see her name on a school, and I'd like to see her name on this school. So I'm trying to do a little compromising here and see whether we can probably make nobody happy, but we'll see.
Mr. Siegel, are you...
Mr. Connor's next.
Mr. Connor?
Number one, let me remind everybody, we had an open process, got a lot of community input. We had a committee that came together. That recommendation was, I would say, not quite unanimous, but strongly in favor of having Cherry Valley Elementary School be the name. This was also recommended by the superintendent, which is what we're talking about. And I think Mrs. Lane was wonderful and would say that the recommendation really came down for her name for school number two, and I understand we may want more time on that. But I would say that both in terms of location, the history of the area, that, and not to mention the open process, and I recognize this as representative democracy, but in a representative democracy, you need to listen to people. And from my point of view, it was overwhelming in terms of the comments and the discussion around Cherry Valley Elementary School. So I would say that this motion, from my point of view, overrides all that, and I understand that we have a job to do, and that at the end of the day, we're the ones that have the responsibility for this. But from my point of view, this would totally ignore so many factors, so much feedback, that I'm going to have to vote no. I would hope all the board members would think on this, that we engaged in a process, we talked about that process, that process was followed, and in the end, the recommendation was to be Cherry Valley Elementary School. And for us, at the last minute after the entire thing, this to me seems to be an example where this goes beyond just us doing and us having to talk to every person. For example, there was 500 people that signed a petition on this, and there could have been 1,000. I don't know how much in community engagement there's been on almost any topic, but when you get 500 people to sign up for something like that, to me, that's meaningful. It means that there are a lot of people who were engaged. I listened to all the conversations, and I will say that the tenor of that discussion was very strongly in favor here. So I'll just say, I don't feel comfortable at all overriding what I thought was, you know, it's not a perfect process, but it was an objective process where we engage with people. This was the outcome, and now for us to change it at the last minute, I think is frankly, from my point of view, not acceptable.
Mr. Siegel, you're next. Mr. Segal, you're next.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with what Mike said in regards to the process. The superintendent gave us a process by which to make a recommendation for the naming of the schools. The process was indeed followed. Was it, was it perfect? Like Mike said, I would say, no, it probably wasn't perfect. It would have been nice if we had had more enthusiastic participation. There was a board resolution offered several years ago to have one of the schools be named Martin Luther King Jr., with probably with the understanding that at this point, we wouldn't have a school named Martin Luther King Jr. I'm not sure what the history was. I wasn't on that board. So I went through the effort of making, circulating and populating a petition to have a school named King. I was on both nights of the community input, the only advocate for the name for King. There was otherwise no support. There were no voices for the King name. One of the other names that came up was Jane Adams and they had a similar level of support. I guess as a commentary, it's a little disappointing that two such great names weren't able to secure any more support. But as I process all of those meetings that we, that we went through, in the end, the recommendations matched the vocal input that the community gave the naming committee, which the naming committee then passed on to the operations committee, which then passed on to the superintendent to make a recommendation. It really feels like the results turned out, probably the way they were supposed to, based on the kind of input that was given. I'm feeling like the superintendent probably has enough on his plate that if he gave, he gave us a task of naming two schools. We went through the process, we named the two schools. We came up with a recommendation for one school, which the superintendent is going to go with and say, yeah, let's name the school Cherry Valley and hold off on the other. I guess I'm of the mind that unless there is some sort of operational barrier to, to go through, why don't we just go with what the committee recommended for the Constance Lane name? Now, I asked this not as a rhetorical question, I'm actually expecting an answer from, from the board, because it would be nice to hear what the board is feeling about how these schools should be named, because ultimately it is our decision. And I think we should all have the opportunity to weigh in. That's it.
Can you clarify for me, David, the Constance Lane for which building for that you'd support? Or you're not ready to make that decision yet?
Not really. Part of my hesitation is even though I was on the naming committee, it, I didn't make myself understand that the Constance Lane name was open to either school. I was under the impression that it was going to be for the school being built on Kishawaki Street. Could I be perfectly happy with the school being built on South Perryville to be named Constance Lane in Cherry Valley? Sure. I think that I made my feelings about how a school or what a school should be named pretty clear even before this process started. I would be happy with just about anything. The reality is, in short enough order, whatever we name the school, it's going to be just to designate the location where the students and the staff go to learn and to teach. It's going to be an identifier of a building. But I'm also, I guess, going to be a little bit protective of the process that we went through. And even though, I'm clearly, you know, I hate looking like an idiot, but, you know, I'm going to. I didn't really pay close enough attention to these petitions and to see that they were specifically designated outside of my own, which was specific to the school being built on Kishawaki Street. But I still feel like the vocal input from the community matched the recommendations that ultimately the operations committee brought to the superintendent.
Okay. Ms. McCullough, I think you're next.
So, I too would apologize for not getting involved a little bit earlier in this process, but I'm going to talk about process. My first comment would be, and I know that Mr. Schmidt has a heat map of what the boundaries are for the new school. Board members all received that. When I found out that it was going to be recommended to be named Cherry Valley, I offhandedly asked Mr. Schmidt, well, how many of our students that are in that boundary for the new school actually live in Cherry Valley? And the answer was, out of 797 students, 85 live in Cherry Valley. So then, is it, do you have it to put up? So then I asked, well, where do the rest of this, you know, where is the majority of students? Because if you remember, we're combining three schools, Thompson, White Swan, and Cherry Valley. And I was actually asked, so the black outline is the new school district. That's just that, and that, that's not the heat map, right? I would tell you that 330 live in Rockford proper and that 382 live in the township, so unincorporated. But 85 out of 797 live in Cherry Valley. So this is a heat map that shows you where the preponderance of our students live that would attend this new school. And the school is, you can kind of see the swerve around for 90, 39, coming up around to 90, yeah. So there's the new school. If you look for the red dots, that's why we call it a heat map, where you have more students, you have the red color. So if you look, most of our students don't live down south in, of that area, in the whole township area. They don't, most of our students attending the school don't live in Cherry Valley proper. They live, more of our students live in Rockford and a combination of Rockford and the township. So after I asked that question, I got to thinking and I had a conversation with legal about the policy itself. And the policy is that it takes 50 names to bring forward, 50 names on a petition to bring forward a name for a new school. We have the same policy that we follow as board members when we want to be elected. We have to bring 50 names forward on a petition to get our name on a ballot. So that's basically what happened here. But because I get 50 names, because I get 500 names on my petition and somebody else only gets 50, that doesn't mean I win the election. I still have to go through an election. And there still has to be a conversation about the, from, from the constituents about who they want to vote for and to come out and vote. So just because 600 plus people signed a petition, doesn't mean that the veracity of that name over any of the other names that were recommended should be based on a popular vote. That, I don't believe that was the intent of the policy after having the conversation with legal and just after thinking about it myself. The rest of the process that really then came to question in my mind was when I asked beyond the popularity of the name and all the names that were on, I mean, I'm sorry, of all the names on the petition, what was the consideration for Lane and Adams? Because both of those, I went and pulled the, I have the petitions and I have them here. Both of those said for either new school. It didn't just say for Kishawaki. And I was told that they really weren't even considered for the school number one down by Cherry Valley. So from a process standpoint, I found that to be a fall down or a fallback, not purposeful. I don't know who made the decisions as to which names were considered, but I don't, as, as David said, you know, it's kind of one of those things, the more questions you ask, the more questions it brings forward. So from a process standpoint, yes, we had a committee and, but they didn't look at all the recommendations. I've had constituents and some of the people who actually brought forward the name of other schools like Lane, the other names for schools, say to me, I don't understand, you're combining three schools into one school. You have Cherry Valley, White Swan, and Thompson, and yet you're picking the name of one of those schools. It's a new school. Why don't you have a new name? Our previous naming was Marshall and we actually left that up to the students. We let them vote. They had it narrowed down to Voss and Marshall. I'm fully, I was fully prepared to put a motion on to take the names, all four names for Cherry Valley, for example, and all four names for Kishawaki to the students who attend those schools, students and staff, and let them make a decision. But I'm also very willing to support Mr. Rollins's motion because I think that we are trying to compromise. We're trying to say that we appreciate the work of the committee, we understand that the community wants Cherry Valley on that building. It is in Cherry Valley with a Rockford address, with mostly Rockford students, but I think that we need to honor the work that, and the collaboration that Cherry Valley has had with the board to help make this school happen. The one thing that, one of the buildings that cannot be down at Cherry Valley site is, or the names is King, because that was very specific only to Kishawaki. This board, not this board, but the board, the resolution has said that they'd like to see King on a building. The recommendation right now, as it stands, is for Constance Lane. If we put Constance Lane at Kishawaki, that takes away the opportunity for King. So this kind of meets a lot of different needs in terms of Cherry Valley has their name on the school, we recognize Constance Lane, we leave Kishawaki open for King, if indeed that's the will of the board. And so I personally will support Mr. Rollins and I hope that we have enough board members to do so, so that we can move forward with an honorable name for a building and not get mired down with, you know, additional time. But if I felt like the process was really followed and that all names were considered, I might feel a little bit differently, but I, I'm not sure why they weren't. I still haven't gotten an answer why those names weren't considered. And again, I ask you as board members to look at the heat map and see where our students live. They don't all live in Cherry Valley. And so by calling it Cherry Valley School, Elementary School, I think that it detracts from the fact that it is part of the bigger Rockford School District. That was lengthy and I thank you for your time.
Mr. Escobedo, you are next.
Yeah, I guess, interesting to hear a little more about the process. So I think from those in the committee, what consideration were given to the other petitions and just in general, the process a little more? Just if you could speak a little more would help me.
Mr. Connor or Mr. Segal?
Okay, first, let me just say that the numbers are misleading. Now, I'm going to say something. To me, first of all, nobody has asked me anything upfront on this. This is the first time I've heard any of this, including the heat map, including the entire discussion. I am challenging the numbers, number one. There are many people who actually have a Rockford address who vote in Cherry Valley. All that territory by there in the green, that's all Cherry Valley. Cherry Valley Township goes through that entire place. So yes, there is a section, but to characterize this as somehow only the kids in the village of Cherry Valley is very misleading. And I don't think, given the location and the history, that it would be any problem. And I actually have talked to people who are there, not just my friends. So I don't know who you've talked to, but I've talked to people from the PTOs and the people at Thompson have absolutely no problem with this. I specifically asked and over a period of months, they vetted this with people in the actual school. So from my point of view, on that part, none of that, I mean, first of all, the fact that we are bringing three together, let's not forget that White Swan Cherry Valley was a paired school for decades. So that was really one community, make no mistake. So the fact that they physically don't live in the village, I, for example, live in unincorporated. So I would say that none of that holds water. In terms of the actual process, first of all, nothing restricted anybody from coming up with these names. If anybody had attended the meetings and heard the conversations, those in favor of Constance Lane, by and large, de facto assumed that we were talking about school number one. There was nothing that, or school two, sorry, which is Kishawaki. There was no restrictions on it. There was a vote taken when the committee got together and I remembered this, that the instructions were not restricted. I said, vote for whomever you like, because there were some votes for Lane and Adams on the very beginning. But it was clear from the discussions and anybody who went to those discussions, anybody who sat with that committee, recognized that the tenor of the discussions was that really the two names that were targeted, if I might say so, at Cherry Valley were Cherry Valley and Sergeant Keller. And that there was no restrictions in terms of who advocated for what. And so what I'd say is, I mean, I don't want to argue about Constance Lane because she was wonderful, absolutely, and made a strong impression on people. But I think that given an open discussion on the process, people who represented all the schools, if I might say so, there was three of the five principals that were there, including Kishawaki, including Nelson, and including White Swan. And the tenor of that discussion was all strongly in favor of the name. In fact, there was very little discussion on the name for the school that's out in Cherry Valley. That was very, from my point of view, there was very little discussion because there was a consensus across the group that that made total sense. Eighty percent of the time was a discussion of Lane and King in particular for school number two. That's where all the discussion was. So what I'd say is, we followed this, we got this, and the last thing I'm going to say is, you're right, when it comes to elections, whether you had 50 or 500 doesn't matter in one sense. But the election as such was the engagement of the people that showed up and the comments that we got. So that to me really does make a difference. And let me just say pointedly, if you'd like 500 people to show up to a board meeting, I bet that could be arranged to kind of give you an idea of who feels strongly about this. I think my point is, before all this, second guessing, which is a second guessing after the entire thing was done, none of this was done upfront. If that heat map had been put up upfront, I could kind of see the point. But to me, it seems like the outcome didn't fit what somebody wanted and now we all of a sudden have this. We invested time and effort. And so what I'll say is, the lesson for me is, did it matter that people engaged if the board is going to overwrite it here at the last hour after all this has been done? So the fact is that if we really want to discuss this, there is all kinds of things sitting behind Cherry Valley in terms of us registering the names and going forward. So yes, I think there is a time crunch. So delaying by a month or two to me makes a very big difference on this one, because there is some timeframe and we've been at this a long time.
Mr. Escobedo, did that answer your questions about the process?
Is there anything else to add? Anything else?
Mr. Segal, did you want to add anything to that?
Mr. Dixon?
I really do think that the, that the recommendations, the outcome recommendations did ultimately match what the community input was. And to me, the recommendations are good. From a personal standpoint, if I actually do care at all about how a school is named, I think it should be named after a person. But I do think that the... But I do think that the process was, was followed effectively enough that the recommendation that came matches what the input was from the community. And I'm not sure what else you would ask for from a process.
Mr. Dixon.
I wish I was a part of the process. I was not there to hear what the committee was saying and other people. But when I looked at it, we did promise that a school would be on King, or King's name would be on the school. And I figured that it should be on one of the newer ones. And so when they suggest that Constance Lane and Cherry Valley put together, I was a go for that because I really believe that King should be on one of the newer schools. I would be short, sweet. I thought this was going to be a short meeting, but it turned out to be a pretty long.
That's all right.
But I loved the conversation.
Okay. Mrs. McCulloch.
I just want to respond that the numbers that I were given were from the demographer. I didn't make them up. The fact that there's a heat map, that if, if that had been seen, there might have been alternate discussion. I'm not sure why. That just indicates to me that the discussion was a popularity, not about the quality of, of a name for the building based on anything other than a contingent of people that live in that area. So I do wish there, you know, and I wasn't there, and I didn't ask for it then, and I would have hoped the committee might have looked at some of that kind of information as part of their decision instead of the hue and cry. Because as Mr. Rollins says, in the end, you know, the decision is on us. And I would like to be able to still use the King name, as Mr. Dixon said. So thank you for letting me respond.
Mr. Rollins.
So, you know, I offered this in a spirit of compromise. Hopefully it'll be taken that way. And I will say that we do have probably bigger fish to fry at the end of the day. So hopefully we'll, we'll get past this, and once the decision is made, we'll all move on. I do want to just say that the heat map was emailed to all of the board members by Mr. Schmidt on December 20th. No context given, but it was emailed to everybody on December 20th, and I just assumed everybody knew why he had sent it out. I guess I'll react a little bit to the notion that we're overruling somebody. The process was to get community input to make a recommendation, but the decision is the board's. So whatever we do tonight, I mean, we're not overruling anybody. And I'll go back to my original comment, which is, you know, part of, part of my problem with processes like this is that you can get, you know, you can get a crowd with pitchforks if you want to in any meeting. That doesn't necessarily mean that what they want to do is the best thing. So I think we need to be very cautious about the notion that we simply do what the largest number of people who show up at a meeting want us to do.
So we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Rollins that has been seconded, that for naming school number one, Constance Lane in Cherry Valley. Did you have another comment, Mr. Segal, before I?
Is it inappropriate to ask for the president's opinion on, on this?
Okay. My, yeah, my, yeah. I will, I'll just give you, you know, I have mixed emotions to be, but I was very moved, as you were, Mr. Segal, about the Constance Lane name. I actually met her one time and thought the world of her, and she certainly is very deserving of being the name of one of our billings. I support the enthusiasm of the people who came to the meeting to ask for the Cherry Valley name, so I certainly want to respect that. And so I'm torn. And, but I think Mr. Rollins's suggestion is a compromise, and that's what we do. We compromise, so. Could I live with it? Probably wouldn't be my first choice, but I, could I live with it? Probably.
Okay. And I'd be keen to hear Jaime's opinion as well.
Yeah, so I'm neutral here. We're, I mean, I'm kind of smiling for the most part because when I heard the comment about bigger, bigger fish to fry, let's move on. That's my comment. I mean, you know, it's interesting having this level of debate, but I want to have that level of debate about closing the educational gap. At the same time, I understand that, that a school name is very emotional, is attaching to a lot of folks, and I understand that I'm torn as well on this subject, but at the same time, we need to move on.
Okay, I'm going to have the coordinator then call the roll on the motion that's on the floor to name school building number one, Constance Lane in Cherry Valley.
Constance Lane School.
School in Cherry Valley. All right.
Can, before we do this, can I just clarify one thing?
Sure.
Does this mean we are only voting on one of the schools?
That's correct.
David, I'm sorry, can, did I answer your question? Or do I be more specific?
No, that's all right.
Okay.
Anybody else have their line on?
Do this all over again for the next school.
There you go.
So let me, I guess, I'm not sure if I addressed David's question. When I said, "And we need to move on," you know, it, if it, if it gives, I under, so I'm not concerned about the heat map and the numbers because at the end of the day, if the Cherry Valley name and a Rockford address brings unity to the community, and that keeps us moving, to go fish, bigger fish, then let's, let's do it.
Okay, Ms. Fromm.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes, to Constance Lane School at Cherry Valley, in Cherry Valley.
Mr. Segal?
At the risk of losing the Lane name entirely, which I think would be tragic, I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Connor?
No.
Mr. Escobedo?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
I could abstain, couldn't I? I'm going to vote no.
The motion fails. Four noes, three yeses.
Okay. Ms. McCulloch.
I'm going to put a motion on the floor to defer the decision on naming school number one until such time as the students and staff assigned to Cherry Valley, Thompson, and White Swan Elementary Schools have the opportunity to vote and bring a recommendation to the board from the following names. And Ms. Holdley might have to weigh in because Constance Lane is on the list. But it's not Constance Lane in Cherry Valley, so it's okay. From the following names, Jane Adams, Leonard B. Keller, Constance Lane, and Cherry Valley. In addition, I move that the vote for school number two be deferred until such time as the vote for the naming of school number one has concluded, and until such time as students and staff assigned to Byer, Kishawaki, and Nelson Elementary Schools have the opportunity to vote on and bring a recommendation to the board from the following names, Jane Adams, Leonard B. Keller, Martin Luther King, and Constance Lane, unless one of those names from this list has been chosen for school number one, in which case said name will be removed from this list. I further move that prior to voting, students and staff will be informed as to the origin, historical relevance, and any current usage within the community of the names on these lists.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Rollins, seconds. Questions or discussion? Mr. Connor.
Well, I just, you know what? This astounds me. Let me just say, this is not moving on. This is dragging it out. There can be a process for school two. There's things lining up behind this, and all I'm going to say is, what it shows is that there's a concerted effort to try and circumvent this yet again. And I would say that I'm going to vote no and say that having deliberation is fine. The other thing I'm going to point out is that the original motion, which was done, what, three years ago, two years ago, the tenor of that was to honor Dr. King. And I think we're obsessing about two new schools on this. There's a lot of options. And so what I would say is, we can still honor the King name. It does not have to be one of those two. And the fact is, there's all kinds of ways to include this and keep. The point of the original was to honor Dr. King, and all I'm going to say is, I personally think it's a mistake for us to drag this out anymore.
Ken?
Questions or discussion? Mr. Dixon.
I have to agree with Ken on this. I think that we need to move forward. Yes, I would love King on one of the new buildings. But for the sake of let's moving forward, I vote no. Let's go.
Mr. Segal?
Is now the appropriate time to ask why it is we want to delay the vote on the school being built on Kishawaki Street?
I think it was mostly because the, the construction has started later. We really didn't need to make that decision until around June, roughly.
Right. I wanted to let this process play fully out rather than combining the two recommendations into one. So while we did the listening session, I felt like we still had more time to, to make the second decision. So that was why I separated the two, so we could look at each one individually. And there was no urgency, whereas the Cherry Valley consideration and that recommendation was based on a timeframe where we are probably, we would, if, if this motion does pass, we will, we will need to move immediately to make sure we get feedback from students and to honor the spirit of that recommendation. Because Mr. Schmidt has informed me that we have a lot of work to do internally in the building. We're getting signage and, and that kind of stuff going needs to happen pretty quickly. There's no such concern with new school number two.
Okay. More questions?
So just to be clear, the recommendation still from the superintendent or the administration is that the school being built out in Cherry Valley or on South Perryville be named Cherry Valley Elementary?
Yes, that was my recommendation. Thank you.
Somebody, or Mr. Escobedo?
I guess I'm just going to say my comment stands the same for the most part. You know, thinking this more throughout the night and just, and, you know, seems that the, again, it seems that the Cherry Valley name brings some type of unity to the community and brings some type of, especially with, and even more to the fact that we don't have as many students from the Cherry Valley area. Most of them are from a Rockford address. It just, it brings that unity into the community, so I'm not going to be able to support it.
Mr. Rollins, I think you're next.
Yeah, I just want to say, I seconded Mrs. McCulloch's motion just to get on the floor and talk about it. But based on the discussion with the board tonight, I don't really see any point in delaying this any further, and we should just go ahead and get, and vote on it.
Ms. McCulloch, do you have?
Well, I originally brought this up because of the conversation about Marshall and the fact that the students were included. And had the committee demonstrated increased conversation about Adams and Lane, I wouldn't even have brought that forward. But I felt like there wasn't a lot of conversation. I thought it was an opportunity for the students and staff to really participate in the process. I was told by administration that they could turn around and get a vote and bring it back to the board in two weeks. So I thought it was worth delaying for two weeks to hear what, I mean, to really engage the students and staff that are going to be in this new school and hear what they have to say instead of what all the adults have to say. So that was why I brought the motion forward. I had it ready because that was my intent. I liked the compromise that Mr. Rollins brought forward, which didn't come forward. So that was the point. And the point that I'd like to make is that it is not going to delay it, and what's the harm in hearing what students and staff at the schools have to say and to engage them in the process and to have some ownership.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor, and that is Mrs. McCulloch's motion about getting the student and staff a vote. So let's have a roll call on that.
Mr. Segal?
No.
Mr. Connor?
No.
Mr. Escobedo?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
No.
Mr. Scravano?
No.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion fails by six noes and one yes.
Mr. Connor?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration and the name be at school number one, Cherry Valley Elementary School.
A second. Second by Mr. Dixon. Questions or discussion? I think I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the superintendent's recommendation for the naming of school building number one.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. We are now on to new business, and our attorney, Lori Holy, will make a next presentation here. Revising the board policy, your favorite?
Well, it's not really revising the policy yet. That'll come in a little, probably within the next two or three board meetings. What this does is reaffirm your current board policy on non-harassment, nondiscrimination. I think most of you are aware of the news out there about harassment, and the state of Illinois has enacted another statute reiterating that harassment is prohibited in the workplace and at schools as well. And so this reaffirms the statutory requirements and compliance with it, and that's why this resolution is being presented. There will be some minor changes to the policy, also to reflect some of the statutory changes, maybe some wording update as well.
Mr. Rollins?
There's a red line of the policy where the change is.
Oh.
There are?
Yes.
I didn't know that we included that yet.
Yes.
I'm going to take that off.
Okay.
Yeah, just the resolution is the only thing I meant to have on. So it'll be brought back next time with just the resolution.
Can I, and this is probably an HR question. We do have training and orientation on this particular policy to make sure that we cover ourselves, I guess, for that.
Yes.
Okay.
We do.
Very good.
Any other questions or discussion? This will be presented at our next board meeting on the 23rd of January for a vote. Dr. Wolf, there you are. Contract with Melanie Rick, Focus Five. Okay. Okay. Equipment, equipment malfunction. Okay. Okay. I know.
You have to keep up with the arts.
This contract that we're bringing before you is, totals $12,146. It would support our professional development for arts educators grant work. We've had Melanie Rick with us before on an under $10,000 contract. The teachers appreciated her work. It transferred into classrooms, and so we would like to bring her back. We started working on the contract with her in November. It's for- It's for June work because she also does training for the FBI at their national headquarters. That's how arts integration is working now. So we feel privileged that we would have the opportunity to bring her here under a federal grant with your permission.
Questions for Dr. Wolf?
I have one. Who would receive this training?
It would be our classroom teachers who are available in June.
Okay. Elementary, secondary, both?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, both, okay. Questions or discussion? Did it go to Ed Committee? Can I ask that question?
No.
No? Okay, all right, okay.
All of the grants were fully approved by the board unanimously.
You're right. Okay. Okay. Seeing no other questions, this will come up for a vote then on January 23rd at our next board meeting. Are there any other comments or agenda for tonight? Dr. Jarrett?
At the risk of extending the meeting, I just, moving forward, would the board like me to recommend that the administration involve students and faculty from the schools per, I know Mrs. McCulloch's resolution did not pass, but we do have a six-month timeframe. And most of the commentary that I heard related to concerns about the short timeframe and wanting to move forward, is it the, would the board like me to engage in, with the faculty and staff of the buildings? Or is it the board's preference that we stand on the recommendation of the committee as it stands with that process? Is there a desire for additional feedback from faculty and students? And you don't have to answer me right now, but I guess I would ask you to think about it. We have some time. But I'll think about it.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Conner?
The thing I would recommend here is that I think what we need to do is, I'm not particularly in favor of going to the students and faculty in quite that way. What I'm really in favor of is that we have a detailed discussion around how to approach some of this, and in particular, the fact that we have two names that have been very prominent in Dr. King and Mrs. Lane. And I'd like to make sure that we do the right things to honor those folks and not necessarily pigeonhole ourselves. So what I'd like to suggest is that the board members who are interested, that we have an open meeting, and we discuss an approach, and I'll give you my example, is that Sergeant Keller, a wonderful man who is a Medal of Honor winner, deserves some recognition. And one of the ideas that's been floated is to name, for example, the gymnasium for Sergeant Keller.
At school number one.
At school number one. And my point would be that to be flexible and bring some of the compromise together, there might be a number of options that we should openly talk about. Because from my point of view, the whole point was never, because the wording really says, "an elementary school named for Dr. King." There might be other options that would honor Dr. King. And I think, and for that matter, you know, Mrs. Lane or Jane Adams, I really think, given the tenor of the discussion tonight, and there seems to be some open issues about how we do this, that we do plan on what should our approach be on some of this. So that would be my recommendation, is to have a discussion, to talk more about what are our options rather than limiting ourselves. Well, and I would just say that one of those options that we've had some conversations about is renaming another building, an existing building, which has its own disadvantages. Mrs. McCulloch?
I'd say we made a choice tonight. We chose to follow committee's recommendation. Why would we screw around and change and do something different for the other school? I don't understand why you'd even go there. And as David said, at the risk of losing Constance Lane, and that would be a risk if the board feels like that's okay. I mean, I'll support it. We did it before. Now we've done one one way, done one another way. Our policy does not do a good job of directing us with what we're doing here. It's just loosey-goosey, and it says the superintendent will put something forward, and so the superintendent then can say, "Well, I don't want, you know, I'm going to put it to a committee and let the committee tell me what I should put out there, and, or I could put it to the students and let them tell me what I should put out there." I mean, it's really a board decision. So funneling it through the superintendent, is that what we want to do? I mean, do we really need to look at the policy as compared to changing it midstream now when you've done one one way and doing another a different way?
I think that's really helpful. So what I will plan on doing is we can move forward more quickly, potentially, we can move forward more quickly than planned with the name to bring, because I heard a lot of desire to have resolution on the issue more quickly on the naming of school number two, even though we have more time. And then we, separate from the naming of school number two, we'll revisit the policy for future boards to consider. Does that sound like the direction the board would like to go?
And Ken, my final comment would be, I think it's, I think it would be very difficult and confusing to change the name of an existing school. So if we really want to go there, there needs to be a prolonged conversation about that.
Understand.
We might just not be able to honor the resolution that we made years ago.
Understand, yeah. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn is we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Pose, same sign. We are adjourned at 8:13 PM. Thank you all.
Lauren, need you to sign something.
You got Mike's stuff already signed?
Yeah.
All right.